I'd like to call this meeting of the Common Council to order for August 18th, 2008. If you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We've got a couple of awards tonight, and to present the first one, I'd like to introduce Lieutenant Paul Larson of the Hudson Police Department, and Lieutenant Larson will present an award.
What the police department is giving out tonight is a life-saving award to David L. Marshall, who is a resident here in the city of Hudson. Let me read you at least a paragraph from our officer's report. Officer John Grass and Officer Bob Larson responded to this call. This happened on Wednesday, July 9th, at 6:48 PM. Officer Grass writes, "Mr. Marshall stated that he was on the island that is directly north of the Dyke Beach area. Mr. Marshall stated that he heard what he thought was a swimmer screaming for help. Marshall stated that he got into his boat and drove to the swimmer and gave him a flotation device. Marshall stated that even although the swimmer had the flotation device, he was still struggling to keep his head above water. Marshall stated that he tried to get the swimmer into the boat, but because of his size and the fact the swimmer was totally exhausted, Marshall was unable to get him in. Marshall held onto the swimmer until I arrived. Marshall was thanked for his help. I spoke with the swimmer while he was in the ambulance, and he stated that he would have drowned if Marshall had not come to his assistance." Now with that, I'd like to have Mr. Marshall come forward and receive his life-saving award. We're very sincerely appreciative of the citizen here of Hudson and basically the Mariners Co.
Thank you.
Our second award tonight is for a group of baseball players, and they're the 10-year-old Little League Champions, State Champions. First time that's happened, and I have a proclamation here that says, "On behalf of the Common Council and the citizens of the city of Hudson, I do hereby recognize and officially congratulate the members of the St. Croix Saints as 2008 Wisconsin Little League nine-to-10-year-old state champions. Coaches Wes Sando, Ed Hendricks, and Chris Ball, the parents and fans are hereby commended for their loyal support. We applaud the team for their splendid efforts and accomplishments throughout the season. Be it hereby known to all that we extend best wishes to the St. Croix County Little League baseball for continued success in the future." So we're gonna have all these guys come up here and get on TV briefly.
Good job.
There you go. Stretch that out.
Can you get 'em? Big line, isn't it? Okay, good job, guys.
Team, I'd like to present you a signed ball by the team for here in City Hall.
All right.
In the 50-year history of Little League in the state of Wisconsin, this team represents the first team ever from Hudson to make it to the state tournament and the first ever state champions.
Great. A shirt, too? Oh, boy, that is nice.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming down.
All right, will the clerk call the rule, please?
Mayor Knudsen.
Here.
District One, Morissette.
Here.
District Two, Brokaw.
Here.
District Three, Bernard.
Here.
District Four, Wyland.
Here.
District Five, O'Malley.
Here.
District Six, Burchill.
Here.
All right, at this time, we take comments and suggestions from citizens present. Is there anyone here who'd like to address the council on any item that isn't on the agenda? Yes? Step right up.
I think you're covering out the agenda or anything else.
I just want to remind the public that the Spirit of the St. Croix Days is coming October 15th through the 18th, and as this Little League group took Hudson off to the state of Wisconsin, now we're hoping the state of Wisconsin all comes to Hudson for this event. We're really excited. The advertising that we received from the GEM grant is now being seen in Chicago and Milwaukee and in the Dakotas, and we're already getting hotel rooms booked. The fishermen and the amateurs are coming in a week to 10 days beforehand, so we're seeing really some excitement happening. Really encourage the public to go onto our website, and they can get the agenda and the items that are happening, the excitement for the kids, the park, we worked with the park board, and the kids' event on Saturday is just stupendous, so we're so excited that that's happening, and we have climbing walls and all kinds of fun things for the kids to do. So we encourage the community to look, it's www.hudsonwi.org, and they can check in under October and see the event schedule. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Is there any other citizen present who'd like to address the council tonight? Anyone else here who'd like to speak? We'll move on then to the consent agenda. Will the clerk please read the consent agenda items?
To approve the public hearing and regular meeting minutes of August 4th, 2008. To approve the proposed T-Mobile plans for antenna equipment and cabinet at the Wisconsin Street Water Tower site. To approve the proposed certified survey map to subdivide Lot 20 in the Hudson Industrial Park, 1615 and 1621 Livingstone Road, as proposed by Pat Rollins. To approve claims for payment in the amount of $331,580.30. A detailed description is available in the clerk's office on request. To accept the bid from Pembroke Construction in the amount of $25,786 for the 2008 sidewalk curb and gutter replacement program. To accept the bid from Yoakum Oil Company Incorporated in the total amount of $162,416.50 for providing fuel, oil, and gasoline to the city from September 1st, 2008 to October 31st, I'm sorry, August 31st, 2009. To grant the Chamber of Commerce an exception to the insurance requirement in the special event permit for the Spirit of the St. Croix Days event in October based on the certificate of insurance they provided. To approve retaining the firm of Short Elliott Hendrickson as planning consultants to assist the city of Hudson in updating the city's comprehensive plan at a cost not to exceed $49,905 with the city attorney review and approval of the services agreement. To refer to the Finance Committee discussion of the bonus row engineering contract.
Please pull that one.
To refer to the Plan Commission a review of the lot lines for P1 and P2 and heritage screens development. To refer to the Public Safety Committee the proposed amendment to municipal code creating Chapter 201 regarding sexual offenders and sexual predators.
Could you please pull that?
To place and file the quarterly reports of the police chief, the water utility director, and the Public Utility Commission minutes of August 12th, 2008. That is all.
Okay, so we've removed review of the lot lines and referral of the sexual. Oh, the bonus true, okay.
Move for approval on consent?
A motion to approve the consent agenda, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Roll call, vote.
Morissette?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Burchill?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Consent agenda passes. Next item on our agenda is the conditional use permit for a master sign plan for freestanding and monument signage proposed by Jerry's Enterprises Incorporated. Doing business as County Market, 2310 Crestview Drive, the retail center at 2312 A through E Crestview Drive, and Home Depot at 2330 Crestview Drive. Applications by Jerry's Enterprises Incorporated. Mr. Darnold's here to answer questions about this, the Plan Commission recommended approval.
Just a point of clarification, the reason why the conditional use permit is required is because they're going five feet above the maximum height from 45 to 50 feet in height. The conditional use permit also is required because they're going beyond 132 square feet for the one freestanding sign as proposed. I did have a discussion with Mr. David Israel, who's the owner of the Leirsey property where the Home Depot is currently proposed. He expressed concerns on the restrictive covenant. I explained to him the purpose of restricted covenant is to identify the signs that were approved tonight, so there's no confusion in the future as to what was permitted. He had concern because of a possible desire to do a smaller sign in the future at the Home Depot similar to the entrance sign that's being proposed by County Market and the tenant. In my opinion, they certainly would in the future have the right to come back and request an amendment to add that sign as part of their master sign plan. The way I indicated, Mr. Israel, is that we're identifying that restrictive covenant consideration, the signs that are presently being proposed and considered by the Common Council. I discussed with Mr. Israel that I would be willing to work as the city attorney in the preparation of that restricted covenant, make sure that there's no misunderstanding that they do have provision to come back, and so we're not precluding their due process in the future. That's something we do not want to do. But, so the Plan Commission is recommending approval. Mrs. Melissa Shattuck, representing Jerry's Enterprises, is here tonight to answer any particular questions, and I'd also be pleased to address any issues that you may have.
Denny, has there been any discussion, the signs are to be internally illuminated?
They'll be internally illuminated, correct.
Has there been any discussion as to how bright that illumination will be?
No, that was not, that's something I can discuss. We can work, or, I mean, as far as I know, there's no intention to be any more strongly illuminated once current, but certainly if that's a concern, we can work with them on getting that standard to a point that's satisfactory.
Thank you.
A move for approval on a committee recommendation. And did what you just said, Denny, included on that bullet point, the last bullet point?
Well, the only clarification is, is that the city attorney and I would clarify that they do have the opportunity to come back and request that additional sign. Again, it's not precluding their due process, it's his concern.
Okay, I just want to make sure that's in my motion.
Okay, motion to approve with legal review of the language regarding future applications?
Legal review and also inclusion in that restricted covenant that they have an opportunity to apply for the smaller sign in the future. Mr. Israel realizes the reality of a larger sign, but doesn't want to be precluded of having a smaller sign, if that's something they may choose to pursue in the future.
Mr. Burchill had a second?
Yes, I'll second.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is application for operators licenses.
I'll recuse myself, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morissette is recused. The Finance Committee recommends and staff recommends approval, you have an issue sheet in your packet. What's your pleasure?
Move for approval.
Have a motion to approve?
The staff recommendation.
The staff recommendation, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Application is approved. There were two items that were removed from the consent agenda, would you like to take them up? At this point, let me see, have I already skipped one of them?
No, they're both here.
They're both here.
Business.
All right. Well, let's tackle the library and their old business, I guess that's first. Oh, update on projects, I skipped that. Mr. Schwartz, update on projects.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Lakefront Wall project, the step and the wall revisions are now complete, they spent the day bringing in fill and topsoil. Monarch plans on prepping Wednesday and paving Thursday and Friday of the path, and that'll be followed next week with the installation of the pavers. Following that, next week, the landscaping contract's gonna mobilize, and he thinks his work's gonna take about two weeks. The Crestview Drive fill and overlay project, they're continuing to curb removal and patching work with the curb masters coming in later this week. The contractor hasn't quite decided yet whether or not he's gonna attempt to mill, begin milling before Labor Day, but it's looking more now like he's gonna wait till after Labor Day to mill that road. Other than that, there was up on, related to the school project, the paving of Mayor Street, and they thought they were gonna have that done by this evening, that patching work. So what will remain on that project is work order items and some televising of the sanitary sewer.
I just have a question on the, the reason he's putting off the milling on Crestview is just for convenience of the public?
Yes, and his convenience as well, too. But it's primarily for the convenience of the public, and he still feels he can meet that schedule by delaying.
He's starting sand dates, that is committed to.
Yeah.
Chuck, I have a real quick question on the lakefront park. Has the irrigation system been marked and surveyed and ready to go as well?
You'd have to talk to Tom on that, we don't, they two are waiting for the path in the wall to go in, but that, we're not really involved with the irrigation project. My understanding is that was gonna follow the landscaping. We want to know where the trees are placed, so if any of those change, that, the heads aren't conflicting or those get interrupted or moved.
Don't you wanna put those in before you pave and do your pavers and tar and all that?
No, well.
We're gonna dig up our newly paved paths?
No, they won't dig that, they'll either numbago for underneath or install some conduit. Those details have been worked out, as my inspectors aware of them, I just don't know the precise details of that. Tom, I don't know, is there anything you wanna?
There are pieces of conduit underneath the, underneath the gravel now, so there won't be any spokes for some of the irrigations.
Bear with me, I've been out the last six working days. Any other questions?
Any other questions? Thank you. Next item then is number 8A, under unfinished business. Review proposed revisions and consider approval of amended joint library agreement and discussion of proposed major capital outlay. First part of this is the amended joint library agreement. The joint library partners have split the process into two components. The first component was designed to be a necessary but separate groundwork to let us consider doing the major capital project. The other municipalities have reviewed and approved the amended joint library agreement already, and there were a couple of minor changes. You recall that we got separate counsel, Mr. William Thiel of the Weld Riley Firm in Eau Claire to represent us on this because our usual attorney represented two of the joint partners. I think you have Mr. Thiel's correspondence in front of you. At this morning's meeting, I presented those changes to the group, and they were largely accepted with one change. The, the, let's see, can you pop that, are you gonna be able to? No, this you don't have. But the council has my memo that looks like this, that had the changes specifically, item by item. In Section 1, the clarifications, there were no problems. In Section 2, the added language about the impact fees, they didn't have a problem with that. In Section 8, the clarifications on the budget was accepted with the change of this, I think you had this on your table in front of you. It's just a slight, one of the things that our attorney recommended scratching out, our other partners wanted to put back in so that that sentence would be retained, and it would read, "The capital portion shall be spent by the joint library only for capital purchases unless otherwise approved by all municipalities." That would be on page 7, under subsection A, operating funding. The setting the date by which the library board must submit their annual budget request, actually, my memo was in error, I had October 15th in here. Your draft said October 1st, and the discussion this morning was that that actually should be September 1st. And then, the one change of substance was, oh, it was in, it was in what I called Section 9 here. This deals with whether the library employees will remain city employees, just for explanation on this, because it is a little bit complicated. But we come at this joint library agreement in a little different position than our partners do, because we've provided the building, and while the employees are not hired by us, they're not selected by us, they're not trained, supervised, or disciplined as city employees, they are city employees, we act as both the fiscal agent for the joint library, meaning we keep the books and handle the money. For that part, we get paid $1,000 a month?
Correct.
And it's been stepped up. We've also been designated the personnel agent, and it has been agreed that we'll continue to be the employer. This issue came up because our partners recognize it may be beneficial for the joint library at a point in the future if the employees actually became employees of the joint library. There's nothing in state law that says they have to be city employees. But, the question is, are we ready to do that right now? And the answer was, probably not. So we had tried to put in this language. Our attorney recommended this underlined line in my memo here, or it's in Section 9 on your draft, which was adding a sentence that said, essentially, it gave the city the right to give one year's notice and say after that, they wouldn't be our employees. Our library partners object to that language unanimously, and so that's a sticking point. I don't think it's a make or break deal for us. So with that, I'd say, you know, we probably need to accept Section 9 without that change. And then, Section 12 substituted some new language in the last sentence, and there was no objection to that part. I got a little flack from the partners for making changes after everyone else has approved it, but some of the changes were really important, one of which was the idea that the library board needs to bring their budget by a certain set date. Everyone's understanding if we do this new agreement, that the library's budget is fixed under that agreement unless all four municipalities approve, and that could only work if we had time to approve it. So I think these were some important changes, I would recommend your approval of this part, and then we can talk about the status of the major capital project approval after that, if you'd like to take them in two parts, or we can move on to talk about the other part right now. At your pleasure, Scott, you got a question?
No, I would like to take them in two parts, and I'll make a motion that we approve the amended and restated joint library agreement.
We have a motion to approve and a second, is there a discussion?
Question?
Yes.
Page 9.
Yes.
Under 12A. I just want a little bit more clarification regarding withdrawal from this agreement prior to the approval of the capital project proposal.
Correct.
So the way this reads is, any municipality can back out of this joint library proposal prior to the major capital project being approved and prior to December 31st, 2009.
Yeah. Good question, and here's the answer. 12A is essentially status quo, what we've got in our current library agreement. And review of the history of this, when we entered the joint library about five years ago, it said that after a certain set date, at first, you could withdraw in one year, it was sort of a trial period, if it didn't work out, any one of us could get out with one year's notice. But then, after some date went by, I don't remember how many years it was, but after two or three years had gone by, then the notice period became two-year notice. The partners amended the agreement when that date came to change it back to one year because they all wanted to be able to get out of it on one year's notice. And so it has been and is currently, and it's adopted without anything being changed, it's a one-year notice. So Section 12A is status quo, before we do any changing to it, essentially. Section 12B is, if we were to buy a building together, now things change because we're making a long-term commitment, and so now, no municipality should be entitled to withdraw from this agreement for a period of 25 years, and it requires five years' notice. So that essentially gives us 20 years to pay off the bonds, and then a five-year notice to know that we've gotta figure things out because one of the partners wants to get out. Other questions? Ready to vote on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. All right, motion carries. Next part of it then is the ago, it said that after a certain set day, at first you could withdraw on one year, it was sort of a trial period. If it didn't work out, any one of us could get out with one year's notice. But then after some date went by, I don't remember how many years it was, but after two or three years had gone by, then the notice period became two-year notice. The partners amended the agreement when that date came to change it back to one year because they all wanted to be able to get out of it on one year's notice. And so it has, it has been and is currently, and it's adopted without anything being changed, it's a one-year notice. So section twelve A is status quo, before we do any changing to it essentially. Section twelve B is, if we were to buy a building together, now things change because we're making a long-term commitment. And so now, no municipality should be entitled to withdraw from this agreement for a period of twenty-five years and it requires five years' notice. So that essentially gives us twenty years to pay off the bonds and then a five-year notice to know that we've gotta figure things out because one of the partners wants to get out. Other questions? Ready to vote on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. All right, motion carries. Next part of it then is the status of the major capital project proposal for the NMC In my last update to the council, I reported that the representatives of the municipalities and the foundation had agreed on this draft language. It's expected that the Hudson Library Foundation will raise five point four million to support the total capital project cost. The project shall not move forward to the scheduling of any bond referenda or levy override referenda unless and until the foundation shall receive commitments from pre-existing foundations or funds from other entities or individuals of at least two million dollars by September fourth. At our August fourth, um, library meeting of the library partners, the foundation reported that the two million dollars in donations would not be able to be reached by September. And that has ensued a number of discussions around what kind of guidelines should we be setting to try to hold to the spirit of the original agreement, which was that it would be a fifty, the original proposal was that it would be fifty percent public and fifty percent private. I think I could sum up in a nutshell for you that it really comes down to this kind of a proposition. Through most of the summer, the concept was going to be that the municipalities would get bonding authority for eight million dollars and that the foundation would have raised two million ahead of time. And that would give us the ability to sort of act as the banker and we would be borrowing the money that ultimately would be repaid to us as the private donations came in. And that was not universally agreed to, but that was our working plan through the summer. Then we were told that the two million won't be able to be raised. This morning, I proposed that we set two new guidelines, that we require that the private and non-municipal funding of at least a million dollars be raised before September twentieth this year, before we would put it on the ballot again. And that there should be private donations, qualified commitments, or cash in hand, that the fundraising has raised at least four million dollars by September twentieth of two thousand nine. That would give another year for the private funding to go on. And that no, uh, no public dollars be expended until we reach that four million dollar threshold. That would essentially make us have a matching plan and that we would be matching dollar for dollar, the money that's raised privately, so that we stay at the fifty percent. Now, uh, this morning, the discussion went like this. The foundation says that they will not be able to meet that schedule, but what they can do is that they feel like they can commit to raising two point four million by the end of March. And that their, their proposal then is for us to get bonding authority to borrow seventy-five percent and we would be committed to that seventy-five percent. And that they would raise the two point four million by March and then make their best efforts to raise the rest. I want your guidance on this. You know, we're at a point where there isn't very much time. We've, we've got probably one more meeting to negotiate this next Monday and then it's time for the town boards, who meet only monthly, to have their September meetings. So it's time for us to give some clear direction to our partners and for yourselves. My recommendation is that this should be a fifty percent private, fifty percent public. I think the costs have gotten to the point that that's the only way it'll be acceptable to the voters. I've got some information for you in your packet about the costs at the fifty-fifty And you can see that the costs for our partners are of course higher than ours because we've been levying impact fees. But at the fifty-fifty, where it'd be five million private and five million public, the impact on the city of Hudson would now be to take our tax up about twenty-six dollars per hundred thousand. The cost for the town of Hudson would be about thirty-one dollars per a hundred thousand. You understand that right now, everyone's paying in around the nineteen dollars per hundred thousand, that's the rate of support. Yeah?
Put that up on the screen, please.
Okay, so there's a table that shows if we had fifty percent private, fifty percent public, that would be essentially five million dollars raised privately and five million dollars, um, public bonding. This also included putting some excess operating funds from the two thousand nine budget, were it to be increased as, as proposed, up to one point two five million from the current six hundred and eighty thousand. The, our other library partners are not on board with that and right now, they'd rather borrow more money rather than pay for it out of the two thousand nine. But, just suffice it to say, I guess you can see here, over to the far right, that's the tax increase. So, for the city, we're currently at around sixteen dollars.
Is that in addition to, or is that?
Well, if you look across the way, Scott, or Randy, it's a good question. Sixteen would be where we are now, forty-two would be our new total, twenty-six on the far right is the increase. So for the town, they're currently at around twenty. Part, partly the reason this isn't eighteen fifty as the contract calls for is you get into equalized value and assessed value and the two aren't exactly the same. That's why even though we are all currently paying eighteen fifty, you can see over on the left here, it shows a little different.
So the total would be plus?
Yeah. So the current proposal, best case, this is if this happened the way I'm proposing and has not yet been accepted, is to see, the town of Hudson would see a new tax of fifty-one dollars, an increase of thirty-one. The village of North Hudson would see a total new tax of sixty-one, that's an increase of forty-one. And the town of Saint Joe would be, uh, a new tax of forty-nine, an increase of twenty-seven. These are subject to some changes. But, uh, attorney Redman that's been facilitating this told us this morning, I haven't verified this, but he said that he had run the numbers, that if we instead did, uh, seven point five million, uh, public funding and two point four of private, that it would only make five dollars per hundred thousand in value. I, I don't know if that's exactly right, but you could add five dollars on here if you went that way. To summarize, um, we need to decide and we need to decide and I guess I'm asking you where you are on supporting this project because...
Can you switch back, please?
My, my recommendation was that we set some hard and fast targets. And I think the one that matters the most is the one that was number two in my memo to you, that we have private funding and commitments of four million dollars by September twentieth, two thousand nine. And my second point would be that I would recommend that then we have bonding authority to go past that for up to another million dollars of public money. And as commitments came in past the four million point, then we would match those dollar for dollar. So I'm excited about a plan that I think could pass and I think it's realistic and I think the one-to-one public matching of the private funds is a good way for us to fulfill the promise we made to the voters, that when they told us, they're interested in us pursuing this and the, the question language said, with the understanding that it's to be fifty percent private philanthropy. So that's my proposal. Now, when I say I need input, I need your input. Will you support this if it's seven and a half or eight million dollars and only a commitment of two point three or two point four privately? Where are you at on this and how would you like us to proceed? With that, I'll open this up to discussion.
I had a couple of questions.
Yes.
The other, the other issue here was, um, if I waited until September of two thousand and nine, what are the possibilities that this facility will still be available?
That is a good question. Under almost any of the scenarios, we'll need to get a commitment either of signed purchase agreement or purchase, an option to purchase the building. That has always been a part of this. It has not been secured currently, although there's a verbal agreement. Without getting into discussing that completely openly, I think right now, the verbal agreement is until after the election. In other words, they have kind of a gentleman's agreement that maybe they'll hold it, but to be honest, nothing's in writing. I think if they had a buyer right now, they'd be back and we, we wouldn't have our deal done in time.
Any, any option to buy obviously has a, a financial piece of that as well.
It can, there are a lot of ways that can be structured.
Okay.
I had a couple of observations, Mr. Mayor. In regards to the fifty-fifty, I'm in more favor with that since, you know, we had, how much time has lapsed since, uh, they have the approval from the general public to go ahead and start fundraising in essence and to the state has not raised, not even a dime, from what I'm understanding.
No, that, no, okay.
No? Okay?
I don't wanna interrupt you, but I could clarify for you.
Go ahead.
There has been some fundraising.
Okay.
Although when I proposed a million dollars by September twenty, and we were told this morning that that wouldn't be possible, that we had defined qualified commitment as coming from existing foundations, so that meant it couldn't be just any donor saying, "Yeah, sure, I'll make a pledge." They do have one large commitment. However, it didn't meet our, the committee had through the course of the summer, defined what would be a qualified commitment and it was to receive the money over a period of three years. The, the large commitment they got was over a period of five years. So technically, that one doesn't meet the standard and it isn't a million dollars either. So there's, anyway, without interrupting you, you're right, there has been fundraising going on.
Okay.
But it has not, it is somewhere less than a million.
Okay.
But more than zero.
Well, regardless, they had time and, and I'm no fundraising guru, but at the same time, you've reduced the benchmark to make a million and they're saying they can't do that. We're facing a public safety, uh, building prospect here in the near future and I simply don't wanna tie the funds up completely without looking at all the options and so far, this is the best one that I've seen, to assure us that we've got fifty percent of some funding there before we invest our taxpayers' money and the rest of the fifty percent, well, we have to look very seriously at a new public safety building.
If this particular facility isn't available and we've raised two point five million dollars by middle of March, can that money be invested in a different facility or is it tied to this facility?
It would be tied to this facility. The, the, um, the foundation has a vision for the library and the vision is to be on the lakefront, to be in the NMC building and to have that building be purchased and remodeled to be fantastic library facility. And they're approaching the donors on that basis. They're selling them that vision, that place. It's not transferable, it's not gonna be money without strings attached, it's going, it's, it's dedicated to that building, for the most part, I think, and at least for the large, for the large foundation gifts that they're, that they're going after.
Can I address Randy's concern for just a moment?
Yes.
Because, Randy, you were just talking about timing, which is a crucial matter here. And, um, it is really, to my mind, the, the largest single concept that is directing efforts. Because fundraising, the history of fundraising, at least here in the St. Croix River Valley area, has been that philanthropic giving is very good, uh, when it came for the YMCA years ago and then after that, for the Hudson Hospital. Uh, actually, we're talking about over-subscribing, uh, getting more donations than originally planned. But also, it took longer than originally planned. It's, it's great, but it's slow. And you mentioned that, uh, there has not been that much fundraising that's really been accomplished and you're right. But that's because it's been since April and these philanthropic organizations are like any other corporation, they make annual budgets. And so they are going to be talking now about what they're gonna be doing in two thousand nine. Uh, it's tough to go to them in April or May and say, "Give us some money now." Well, they've already allocated that money for two thousand eight. We are also, and I think we should keep this in mind, we're competing for funds that other organizations want and they are coming to these philanthropic groups with concrete plans, no contingencies. Uh, the philanthropics don't like contingencies because they don't know if their budget's gonna be utilized or not utilized. And their whole goal is to have it fully utilized so that it's helping people in the world, not sitting in their bank account. Uh, so timing is aggravated by the fact that the NMC building has come along and they wanna sell it as soon as possible. Uh, the, the way that this would work a whole lot smoother is if we were to, uh, as I think Lee was perhaps thinking of, um, if the NMC building were not available and we had time to plan where the library was going to be and get everybody on board for that and, and have a concrete, uh, or a plan of more substance, let's say, that we can take to the philanthropic groups. The fact is, if we get the NMC building, we're gonna be able to buy a building for about seventy-five cents on the dollar. And that's a pretty good deal. So that's why, uh, we're excited about it. Also, it's in a great location and the, the voters have told us, for a new library in that location, we proposed to them last April, twenty-four dollars, now it's, I think, twenty-six dollars, but they said overwhelmingly, yes, we really want you to pursue that. So, I think that although the fifty-fifty plan is gonna put a, a lot of work on the shoulders of those who are raising the money, I believe it keeps faith with our original proposal from last April. It's what we told the voters we planned on doing. I think we ought to do that. It would be a whole lot simpler and get things done a lot faster if we did, as the mayor just mentioned, seventy-five, twenty-five, but I think you would get more people worried about that outcome and possibly changing a yes vote to a no vote because of the uncertainty. Timing is just really terrible on this entire project. But because this very attractive building came along, we really can't just ignore it. And, and that's what's caused everything to try to be accelerated. What we need to do is agree on a plan and unfortunately, as the mayor said, we have to do it now, so that we can go, the, give the green light to the foundation to go forward with their fundraising, giving them a very clear idea of, here's how it's gonna be structured, these are the rules, and this is what you have to work with. So there is, there's no uncertainty anymore. And, uh, to further discussion, I will move that we accept the mayor's proposed plan of fifty-fifty, matching dollar for dollar. And that the, uh, the foundation, the philanthropic organizations will have commitments. And, by the way, parenthetically, uh, what the mayor's referring to is that there are some, uh, philanthropic groups that, uh, are, are so reputable that banks will loan you money just on their word that they're going to give you, uh, a grant. And I think that's what the city's been looking for. So my motion is that we would, uh, go back to the four partners to say, "We want to move forward with the fifty-fifty plan with the foundation raising two point, I can't remember, two point four million by September of two thousand nine." Is that, is that what, is that what? Is that, is that, is that the correct number?
No.
Four million.
It's four million.
Four million.
It's 2.4 by March 31st.
No, not by March 31st. It was by September.
There were two, there were two benchmarks.
They offered 2.4 by March.
Correct.
The mayor is saying 4 million by September. Am I quoting correctly?
Correct.
And I would go with a 4 million by September.
Yes, just parenthetically, I'd just say that a week ago today in our library partners meeting, we left saying, "I think we need to raise the five privately first." And then afterwards, there were some discussions, you know, would you have to be the whole way to the whole 5 million before you'd be ready to move? Because it gets to the question of, you know, what if you're at four private? Now you've got enough to do an eight, eight and a half million dollar project down there. I think everyone would like to see us move ahead at that point. And we'll continue to raise money. Maybe the project has to be changed a little bit. That's heresy to the, to the foundation because they don't want to see it be anything but the very best. But I think we'd at least move forward with it. If we get to the four and we had four private and four public, we'd basically be there. Right? We'd be ready to buy it and start, and start spending public money and start remodeling. I mean, we would be, we'd be there. But we wouldn't quit with the private funding. That fund drive, their plan for that fund drive was originally, it had to be an 18-month process. And I believe the idea was that that 18 months would sort of officially start after the election. Now, what Randy's saying, what I've been saying is, why hasn't that been happening right now? But the fact is, some of it has been happening, probably not as much as I would have wished.
I just don't want to see our taxpayers be left without a chair when the music stops. And that's what happens if this doesn't go forward.
And so we've got a motion now. And before we discuss it any further, I should ask for a second.
Hold a second.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there, for those of you who haven't chimed in, would you like to speak to it?
I would.
Yes.
You know, I think there's two issues here. And the second issue, the first issue is the 50/50 split and how that money is raised. And I think we've got a motion right now. We haven't talked at all about operating expenses. Where are we going to get the money to fund the operating expenses? We have limited budget resources right now with our, is it 3% next year, 2.8%?
2.5.
2.5%. Do you have, you know, that, from what I've seen before, initially, the budget was about a million dollars, million eighty? Now it's up to a million 250?
Correct.
Okay. So do we feel comfortable that that's the correct number, a million 250 for the operating budget? And where's the money going to come from to pay for it out of our portion? Again, we have city buildings. We've got pay increases for our employees.
A public safety building?
Public safety building, so... What page is that on, Devin?
That's on this, well, you've got it two different ways. You've got it in this memo to you.
Yep.
As a table. And that would be table seven, page six.
Okay.
And it was also in the detailed spreadsheet, page three of that one. And here, here's the brief overview for you. At the time of the referendum, the first number that was discussed was, I think admittedly, kind of a rough estimate. And the current budget is 680. They said it's going to go up to about a million. And then that number was adjusted after some further reflection and some hard questions from various people, that that number then moved up to 1.1. And so it was that we, you know, that the proposed library budget would be 1.1 million dollars a year. That takes into effect, or into account, more employees and higher overhead for running a bigger library. Our library discussion group has asked that they really look at that. And the other significant thing that we negotiated was to say, "Look, you aren't going to get an annual increase unless all four of us can fit it in our budgets." So this, your budget number has to be enough that you could live with it if you don't get an increase for a while. And one of the things we suggested in there, Alan, was that there ought to be a capital fund. So that if some little thing that they own breaks, that they can fit it into their budget. And so they sat down with Betty Caruso and some other financial advisors, went through this, came back with kind of a futuring fund for library equipment. And that added another 75 or 100,000 dollars a year. I'm not sure why, but last week, the budget went from 1.15 up to 1.25. And I never really saw any explanation for that one. But I agree with their concept that it's probably going to be more expensive than you think to run that new place. So that's where we got to the 1.25. Now, I don't have detail to, to give you where they came up with that because to be honest with you, I've never been given that detail.
No, and I guess if we use those numbers, how much is more is it going to cost the city of Hudson to fund the library? And where are we going to come up with the money?
Unless, unless you, the current council or future councils, agree to it, you'll, they'll never get an increase.
Right, but I'm talking about the existing budget that they put forward to us. Where are we going to get the money to pay for that? And what is our dollar amount that we have to fund at 1.2 million dollars?
Okay. So for the city's component, you can see it, if you can see it on the screen, which might be a little bit small, but you can see, can you? Here, let me use your, okay, point to city of Hudson operating expense. Okay? So right there, you've got operating expense of 541,000. That's our, that's opposed to right now, our operating expense component is 254,000 a year. So it's just over doubling for us and for everyone. It's more so for the, it's a little different impact for North Hudson because another component of this that we negotiated was switching from an assessed value means of paying for it to population. And that makes it hit North Hudson a little bit harder. So essentially, library cost in North Hudson is ready to triple if they approve this.
So we have an increase in our operating budget of almost 250,000 dollars. How much money do we get at 2.8% on our budget for the entire city without going to referendum?
From the, well, we will be going to referendum.
For the operating expenses?
Absolutely. Part of this, what, the next steps on this, you did the joint library agreement tonight.
Yes.
So if, I think, basically, that'll be done. And even if this other thing doesn't come to pass, we've done a lot of important work in there for what will be needed for this project or future projects. One of the most important parts to that was exactly what we're going through right now is we laid out under section 5A on page five, the specific steps that need to be negotiated before we enter any kind of a major capital agreement. And you're asking questions right now about number three. We need to know what the anticipated operating budget's going to be. And number four is what we're talking about here is the sources of funding. And when, the timing is number six, the timing of when the contribution would need to be made. And so that's part of this, is, is that. So Alan, it's always been assumed that there would need to be a referendum for the levy limit override because there's no way any of the municipalities can fit this within their budgets under the levy limit law that limits you to 2% a year. No way. This one item will eat up. I think in North Hudson, I think I have this right, that their 2% gives them something less than 100,000 dollars extra to spend this year. And their increase on the library alone is going to be about that much. So everybody will be going, the taxpayers will be essentially voting themselves, an increase for the year 2000 and ongoing, meaning this is a forever tax increase.
Could I address that issue for just a second?
Absolutely.
Because I would like to point out that for those who might think that we're embarking on acquiring some sort of palace or, or some sort of luxury item, we're looking at, for the city of Hudson, I believe, 42 dollars total per 100,000. The average for any city in the state of Wisconsin is 66 dollars. So we're still substantially below the norm for the state of Wisconsin. And we would have exceptionally fine library.
So can we talk a little bit about, so there's a motion and a second for the 50/50? Do we want to vote on that before we talk about other benchmarks? And I'm just, I'm wondering what else is behind that? Because we're talking about...
Good questions.
Could I ask you, Scott?
Mm-hmm.
And you all had this memo that I gave to the joint library partners.
I don't have it in front of me now.
Do you have that?
Probably have it in front of me.
Probably not. Can, well, okay. Why don't you go make some copies of that? I suggested the million dollars by September 20th. It can't be done. I mean, I honestly believe if we required it, it would happen, but I'm an optimist. But they say it can't be done. So really, what you're down to then is, do you like the idea that we would require that they have 4 million dollars raised by that September 20th, 2009? And then we'd match that? And then we'd match after that, dollar for dollar? So essentially, it's a one-to-one matching, except that our match doesn't start until you hit that 4 million dollar threshold. That was the concept. I think, was that what you meant to make the motion? That was your motion, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Does anyone have any questions about that then? You want to vote on that part? Pam?
No, I think that's a number that seems reasonable.
All in favor of that, say aye.
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 All say no.
No way does that tie us into the operational cost, right?
That's a separate question. That's another, that's a levy override, which will be the second referenda, referendum question.
It will. And you all here at the table understand, and I guess the public probably understands, that we're closing our TIF district out at the Business Park. And because of that, we are going to get a one-time burst or increase in our tax levy limit. And that's going to give us some room. Despite the fact that that's happening, it was always my intention and belief that the voters ought to have a chance to vote on this levy override part, Alan. So even if we could find it in our budget for the city, our partners can't. They're all going to have to have a levy override vote. I think we should have the voters here have a chance to do it as well. And the same thing goes for the bonding. They, for the most part, don't do a lot of bonding. We do bonding every year. If we wanted to bond for our part of this, because we have the impact fees, our part of this is only 1.4 million dollars. We bond every year for more than 1.4 million dollars. And we don't go to referendum for it. We could do that here, too, if we wanted to. That'd be the city. I don't recommend that. I think we should take those two questions to the voters, just like all our partners are.
Don't you think it should be one question? Because what if they approve the...
Well, it can't be one question.
Okay.
So what happens, your question is, what if they approve one and the other?
Yep.
The whole deal dies. So there's four municipalities, there's eight questions. Any one of them fails, the whole deal dies. Because our major capital agreement, if you read that closely, it's contingent on passage of those eight questions, or it doesn't happen. Because we've known from the beginning, the levy limit override law in the state of Wisconsin is very specific, and you can add in a whole bunch of other questions.
And we just approved that capital, major capital.
You did. The operational cost, I mean, what, what would you suggest? I mean, you can't move into that building without running that building. And the whole vision here is around that building. I'm, I'm flummoxed. I mean, on the one hand, I'd say, "Look, I wish it was a cheaper building to operate, but I legitimately think they're in the ballpark now with the estimate of 1.25." When it was 1.1, I thought it was maybe shading it a little bit tight. But 1.25, I think that is a legitimate number for what it's going to cost. Go ahead, Lori.
At some point, can we, I mean, can we get some of those details? I feel like we're being asked to approve something that we've not really...
Well, we're just being asked to approve the questions we're going to ask the public. We're not, we're not deciding to buy anything or put forth any money. We're simply going to decide to ask the public if they want to continue.
Well, part of my question is, what if 1.25 isn't, isn't realistic? Then we're going to the voters with something that we've really not fully vetted. We're saying we think it's going to be 1.25 based on what we've been told.
I think...
But we've seen no details. That's all.
Without having seen the detail, I'll tell you, I have faith that the library board, the library board president, and, and the foundation have spent time and done due diligence on this with a full awareness that there is no reason to think that they'll be able to come back and say, "Look, we way underestimated, so we need more money right away." They know that that is very unlikely to happen. It's very, especially after we just went to the voters with it. So they've looked at it and, no, I, I mean, I know what you're saying about the detail, but I'd, I'd say they have worked on this.
If I could help Lori understand that a little bit better, the library board has never thought it would cost that amount of money. We really, we've never voted that amount of money for expense for the new, operation of the new building. The library board thinks it'll cost a lot, not a lot less, but it will cost less. However, I think the mayor's concern is well-placed, that to make darn certain that it's not, that we're not going too low and that knowing that we're not going to get any increase for a number of years, that's why the numbers, frankly, in my opinion, slightly inflated. Library boards never asked for this amount.
Maybe you can help me with this. What, if it's grossly higher than, what happens to those excess funds? What if it's only 600,000? What happens to, I mean, how much is it padded and where will the money go?
I have to tell you, for the past five years, the library board has one and only one mandate. And that is the day-to-day operation of the library. And I think we've, over five years, kind of gotten to understand what it costs to operate a library. And so when we say to you, "It's going to cost a million and 80,000 dollars," I think it's going to cost a million and 80,000 dollars. However, I think the mayor's point is well-taken. Let's make sure that we never have to come back and ask for more money by putting that figure higher right now.
Okay, so if it's 170,000 too high, I'm just asking where that money will go.
Okay, I'll tell you. Under, under Wisconsin law, library boards are a very independent entity. Once we have given them their budget allocation, that becomes library board money. And we don't have any further control over it. Over the last five years, in each and every year, I believe, or at least in the aggregate of the five, we have overfunded the library. In other words, they have operated frugally, and they've been accumulating a fund balance. And they've accumulated over 200,000 dollars of fund balance that, you know, it's available to be used for this project or whatever the library board decides to use it on. But that's not for us to say. Now, in the, in the negotiation of this, this has actually become a little bit of an issue because frankly, the foundation proposes that that be, 200,000 be considered as part of their private funding. Since it isn't exactly taxpayer dollars anymore, although it was at the time we gave it to them, now it's library funds. My position has been, that's really, should be part of the taxpayer part. If it gets used, it should be applied to our 5 million. But, you know, you're kind of splitting hairs. But you can, it's an issue. So that's maybe the answer to your question. If you give them more than they spend, it stays in the library. They'll use it someday somehow for the library. You can't get it back.
I have a point of clarification, back to a little bit of, okay, we increased it to 42 dollars for the city of Hudson, capital purchase alone. And then we're going to ask the taxpayer to pay an additional sum for the operational cost. So 42 is not correct.
No, the 42 includes the...
Operational?
Includes the operations.
Okay.
Yeah.
And it's 42 per 100,000?
Right. And the state average is 66.
Can you understand how we got to 42, where our partners are in the, in the closer to 50 and 60? As a few years ago, we instituted a library impact fee so that every piece of new construction in the city has paid into a impact fee fund to help for future expansion of the library. And then we negotiated as part... And then, we negotiated as part of this that there was two-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars of library fund balance that was there at the time we formed the joint library. And they agreed that in exchange for us giving up all rights to the collection, which would be various, variously valued at somewhere between a million and two million dollars, right now, we have the right to claim that if we withdraw from the library agreement. But in this new proposal, we give up our right to that in exchange for getting a one-time credit of two-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars. When you apply our impact fees, which is about four-hundred-and-fifty thousand approximately, maybe four-ninety, and, and that one-time credit, that brings our part of the capital contribution down. But no, Randy, the forty-two is inclusive of our increased operating expense and our capital cost if we were to borrow the money we need twenty years at four-point-five percent. Now, there's other ways for us to borrow money. We borrowed money this past year and got an extraordinary low rate because we got a new bond rating. We actually did better than four-point-five percent.
I just want a clarification on that.
Yeah. Lori, were there other parts you wanted to discuss?
No, so, we will vote separately at a later date on the referendum, referendum questions, correct?
Correct.
And that's assuming that the four municipalities are in agreement with what we talked about tonight and passed. If they're not in agreement, we may not be talking about referendum questions.
Well...
They've already passed, haven't they? They've already passed.
Not this major capital project proposal. You know, I've informed that group that while I have my own opinions about it, ultimately, it will be the Hudson City Council or common council that votes on what the city's position on this is. I have tried to talk with each of you and get a sense of where you're at on this. It's a bit of a moving target for each and every one of us. But my question to you, I guess, would be that if you can't accept what's being proposed here, and you feel like we come back in two or three weeks from now, and there's no way you can vote for it, then I wish you'd do us and our municipal partners a favor by speaking up now and saying, "This or this is just unacceptable and has to be changed." Because otherwise, what it's going to happen is, when you make those objections at the end, the timeline is so short here that it essentially kills the project. Right now, no matter how tough your changes are, there's still time for everyone to look at it. I don't know if that makes sense, but I know it's a lot of detail. It's a difficult thing.
Dean, are we talking about a referendum this fall?
Well, we're talking, when the, when the, when the foundation came to us and told us two weeks ago today that they would be unable to make the two-million-dollar commitment, the suggestion was made that maybe this needs to be postponed until the spring election. And I would say the consensus, or I believe it was actually unanimous in the part of all of the library partners, was that we can't do that. We, we need it to be in the fall. The only time the, the override question really makes sense is before we do our budget. Once we've done our budget, it's difficult to change things. So, it's, it pretty much has to be at a fall election. Not only that, the fall elections are when we have the greatest turnout, so we'll have the most chance for the most people to express their opinion. And so, yes, we're talking about November fourth, that we would be scheduling an override question on this issue, and a bonding authority question, which has yet to be worked out. I mean, there's a lot of detail here that's yet to be worked out. But if you, if you don't agree with the concept of that, tonight's the night to say so. Because what I'm saying is that I would recommend going forward and putting it on the ballot. If we do it as a one-to-one matching program, where they meet that four million dollars, then we come in with four million of public funds, and then one-to-one after that, up to a total of five million public. And the private could go on, and as Scott alluded, the private could go way past five million. I mean, we don't know where the private funding will end up. And so, and I think then the voters have a right. They gave us a three-to-one mandate in the city of Hudson. Now, whether you accept that that was a mandate, or guidance, or whatever, I mean, they did go to the polls and say, "Look, do you want to expend public dollars in a fifty-fifty partnership?" That was the question. Lori?
I guess I'll just make one more comment, and that is, I think it's, while some would say it's going to be difficult to raise that money upfront, I think it's critical that those private dollars come in before the tax dollars do. This project isn't like the FIPS. It's not like the hospital. It's not like the Y. I don't think there are any tax dollars expended in any of those projects, though the fundraising went well. Was there any bonding, I mean, was there any taxpayer dollars that went into any of those that I'm not aware of?
Yeah, at one point, the council voted a significant amount of money every year for the hospital. And the Y, I don't remember. That's, that's too far back. I wasn't on the council. I know, I...
Well, now, wait a minute. There's a difference between securing a revenue bond for an entity that has a revenue stream and actually borrowing money for, with this, we're talking here, general obligation bonds. That means we and the taxpayers are forever and permanently on the hook. We never did any GO bonds for the hospital.
Right, not, not a general obligation.
They have their own revenue stream, so ultimately, the revenue of the hospital is always going to pay that back.
The...
So, I'm sorry, I wasn't finished. So, so it's important that that fundraising happens first. That's going to be the driving force. If we can't get private donations in under those circumstances, when donors know essentially their dollars will be matched, when will, when will those fundraising dollars come in? I mean, this is, that's a great motivator for any potential donor.
I have no problem with that. The biggest problem, actually, we haven't discussed at all, because it's not our problem, it's going to be the library foundation's problem, is how are they going to keep that NMC building until September of next year? I don't know. That's up to them. And that's, that's a pretty hard task we've set them. And I don't know how they're going to do it, and I haven't discussed that with them. I'll call the question then.
All right, question's been called. Do we have a motion that we're voting on at this point? Because we already voted on the other one. If by that, you mean, should we move on from this item?
I'm sorry, yes, we already did vote on it.
Yes. Can we move on?
Can I refer back to this for just a second? The memo that you had?
Yes.
It was not your intent to have this incorporated into the motion?
No, it wasn't. But now that you all have it in front of you, I would just, do you all have that, where I had points one through six? Let me just give you the feedback that I got on this this morning. Number one, the, the suggestion that there be private funding of not less than a million by September twentieth, that was rejected by the foundation, and they said they would be unable to do that. Number two, and number three, is what we talked about tonight, and I think were in your previous motion. Number four and five, the concept of what happens if the levy override vote happens, and we bump their budget up to one-point-two-five million? Then, here's the issue. Now, you have the right to levy that and give it to the library, or not? Because they won't move into the library until probably at the earliest fall of two-thousand-ten. And more realistically, under this current scenario, it'll probably be two-thousand-eleven. But the only way to go to referendum in November fourth of two-thousand-eight is to ask for permission to raise it in two-thousand-nine. There's two ways you can approach that then. One is to have the permission to raise the library levy for two-thousand-nine, but not use it. The other would be to use that, but to agree ahead of time that, hey, that extra five-hundred-thousand-dollar bump you're getting in the library, that's going into a library building fund as dedicated funds. That was my proposal, to tell you the truth. I don't think that Saint Joe will accept it, and I'm not sure what the others, but if Saint Joe won't accept it, it isn't going to happen, so she indicated that she didn't want to do that. And then, number six, foundation secures a purchase agreement. Basically, that, as Scott indicated, that's going to be crucial to this, because points two and three don't work without number six. And that'll be up to the foundation to get that. So, with that, are there questions, further questions about that? Any other questions on this item, or we ready to move on?
I have just one comment. I'd like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for all the work that you've done on this. I think it was a, a good idea to bring everybody together, and I think we made a lot of progress.
If, if, thank you. I think, thank you. It has been good to work with our partners. And I would just like to say that we are so fortunate to have that joint library, and that kind of cooperative, intergovernmental participation and cooperation is exactly how it should work, but I tell you what, it's a lot of work. I said way back at the beginning, our joint library agreement is something that took the better part of twenty years to get. And once we open it up, there are bound to be friction. There has been some friction. But I think we're all basically going to come out of it and be friends and say, "You know what? It's for the best, and we'll have better library service as long as we can work this out." So, I thank you for your comment. All right. With that, where are we left on our agenda here? I think we're on number nine C... Oh, wait a minute. Nine A, new business, consider revisions to municipal code, chapter one dash eighteen, regarding general penalties, ordinance number six dash oh-eight. This was my recommendation, the general penalties for code violations have not been changed for decades. Currently, in the city, first offense, the minimum is one dollar, sec, maximum is five-hundred dollars. And on a second offense, currently, it's ten dollars minimum and five-hundred maximum.
I'll move the suspend rules to adopt.
We have a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
And a second. Is there any discussion? Rule call, both?
Morsett?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Swiland?
Yes.
Burchell?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Roka?
Yes.
Okay, the rules are suspended towards adoption of ordinance number six dash oh-eight.
Move to approve ordinance number six dash oh-eight.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance six dash oh-eight is adopted. Next item is item B, two-thousand-eight sidewalk curb and gutter replacement project as revised, final resolution number ten dash oh-eight, special assessments.
May I ask a question about this? Since this was brought up previously, although not acted on, did that, is that to be considered a first reading?
In my mind, it would, but that's an internal council rule, and you can take it however you want to.
Well, to play it safe, I'm going to move that we suspend the rules, so I don't have to worry about whether or not that was a first reading.
I'd rather not do it again on a procedural...
Please, no, Lauren.
Okay, so we've got a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
And a second. Discussion? Rule call, both?
Morsett?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Swiland?
Yes.
Burchell?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Roka?
Yes.
Rules are suspended. Resolution number ten dash oh-eight up for consideration.
Do we need to take the, I, I would agree with taking out the section in the Stone Pine, since they would be a...
Yes, it's not, it's not on our sheets.
Okay.
Rand View is not there. Right. I was going to mention Mr. Baker's property, you know, it's not here. So, I'll, I'll move for adoption of resolution ten dash oh-eight for that work as noted on the worksheet before us.
Okay?
Second.
Got a motion and a second for adoption of ten dash oh-eight. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say no. Resolution is adopted. Next item is item C, discussion of Bonestru Engineering Contract. My suggestion is that we have a series of discussions with groups composed of various individuals, some from the, from the council, some from city staff, to enable us to have a free and frank discussion about what we think the issues are, what the problems might be in the relationship between the city and this important professional service provider for us. I would like to suggest that that happen, and that this matter be referred back to the Finance Committee at their next meeting. With that, Mr. Morsett.
You know, I think that a lot of this time that we've spent dealing with these projects and the, it just continues and keeps going, and, you know, I don't, I'm certainly willing to listen, but I think the time for action is now. You know, we, Mr. O'Malley has talked a great deal over the many years about fiduciary responsibilities and making sure we are justifying the taxpayers' money. And it is my belief that we are not if we stay with this engineering firm. And I would certainly move for discussion purposes to end a contractual agreement with them and move into putting out the RFPs for a new engineering firm.
All right, Mr. Morsett has moved that we terminate our, end our contractual agreement with Bonestru and put engineering services out to an RFP. Is there a second? Is there a second?
For discussion purposes, I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Randy, do you have anything further to say?
Not necessarily. I just think that we have an opportunity to benefit the city of Hudson and what we're doing with our projects in a better fashion. I think we need more guidance during these projects and more accountability. There has not been that.
Alan?
Well, yeah, I, I think I should come back to finance, Randy, and I think we should talk, and I, I think we should look at our contract. I don't know what the terms of that contract are, the length of the contract, or... So, I would like to see it go back to finance. And we can deal with it, make maybe recommendation next, by next council meeting, whether we'd like to move on or wait until our annual contract. Have you, Dean, have, have you looked at that? How long the contract, or Devon, do you know the answer to that?
It's open-ended.
Open-ended, okay.
They bring each, early in the year, they bring the renewal rates back, and those are approved.
It's really just an annual rate sheet.
Correct.
The contract is essentially embedded in each project that we approve for which they're providing engineering services, which right now is all of them unless we choose to use someone different.
And I think that the discussions, as Alan said, would be a good way to go. We have to keep in mind that one of the, one of the most prominent issues we've had is, is a case where BRA was not brought on board until it was already in deep trouble. And I don't think we can assess blame to them for the start of that trouble, when we didn't have them involved in it, until after we already were facing some problems. So, I think that what the mayor suggested and what Alan has reiterated is a good way to go. Have further discussion, though. I'm not denigrating anything you've said, Randy, but I think we need to discuss this a little more. It's a very, very important decision.
Okay, because I've heard that twice now, neither one of you used the term "motion", but was that a motion?
We have a motion.
We have a motion.
I know we have a motion, but you're changing the motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll withdraw my motion. I'll move to send it back to Finance Committee.
All right. All right, so is that where we're at? The consensus is send it back to Finance for next time?
May I make one point?
Yes.
Just to clarify something, and I don't, it sounds like the, the contract is open-ended, but there was discussion earlier in the spring, I know before Pam and I were on council, that this would be bid out. And it was not bid out, and it was a...
They asked me to gather some RFPs, which I started to do, and then there was an agreement made that, that Bonestru came in and said they would not make any increases, and so...
Right.
They told me to stop with the RFPs, so that is...
So, that process was somewhat circumvented, or at least stopped.
One of, one of the things that I might suggest to have...
So, I wasn't quite finished.
Okay, go ahead.
So, my point is that this would be potentially a good time to maybe set a target for doing that. We may very well end up sticking with them, but I think it's a process we need...
that. We may very well end up sticking with them, but I think it's a process we need to go through. Now I'm finished.
I think in fairness to Bonestrew, that they've been the city engineer for a long time. And they're, they, we have something to gain by, by having some free discussions with them. And one of the things is an education piece for all of us about how does the contract work? How are the fees set? Because most of the time, it's done as a percentage of the total project cost. You know, and I, I think the old timers that have been on the council a while- Don't look at me. Well, yeah. You're old. Okay, you know that, but I'm not saying that, that, I think there'd be some value, and, and I'm, I'd like to set up some meetings, and I'll do that. And, you know, obviously, we're not going to have it be a full council meeting, so you might get invited to meet with some staff members and them, or something like that. But during that, a chance to ask some questions and learn some more about how a whole engineering relationship goes. My point has been that even if we're going to go to an RFP and start interviewing other firms, I think it'll put you in a more educated position to know what we're looking for, and understand that it's entirely possible that the end of that whole process, we may choose the exact same firm again.
We have, we've been through RFPs, and we've always, and we've stayed with BRA.
Yeah, I understand that, but the last time it was talked about, it did not happen.
As soon as they said, "No rate increase for 2008," we said, "Okay."
Yeah, but rate, yeah, okay.
Okay. So, um, the idea here right now is, I don't know where we're at with Robert's rules, but I hear, I hear-
You withdrew your motion. And I move to, go ahead and move it to finance committee.
Okay, so we move to, uh, send this to finance committee, and was there a second to that? Alan?
Yes.
Alan, second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no.
Nay.
Okay. All right, count that five to one with Morissette voting no. Uh, next item on our agenda was, um, item E, the proposed amendment. Lori?
No, actually, I asked, yes, I asked that that be pulled. Uh, since the council has in recent past acted on this and, and voted decisively on it, I'm wondering why it's back?
I'd like to tell you why. Um, council president Morissette asked me to bring it back after we had the level-three sex offender moved to Hudson. He did. He asked, he asked-
I know, he just told me before the meeting he didn't, but-
No, I didn't put it on this, but-
He didn't ask specifically, no, but here, I'm getting to it. I'm getting to it. During the public notification process, we had a public meeting when that level-three sex offender came, and we took questions from the audience. And one of, if not the most common question was, "Can't you do some kind of an ordinance like this?" And my answer was, "It's constitutionally tricky. It has been done. It is being done. Um, and we'll look at it again." And this is just my way of saying, "Let's put that back and start looking at it again." I'll tell you that the, this week, there was a roundtable with the Wisconsin Attorney General. J.B. Van Hollen was here, and he invited law enforcement officials from around the western Wisconsin area to come. And they were here, and during the course of that, the question, this question came up, and I ventured to say that we had looked at the city of Franklin's ordinance as a model, and were leery of adopting it because we knew that theirs was being challenged, and that we knew that now it had passed, it had been upheld by the first judge, who was a circuit court judge, means he's just, was their county judge, who has to answer to their local voters. So you might expect that he wouldn't vote to say, "Yeah, put sexual offenders just anywhere." So that's not, you know, great. But the Wisconsin Attorney General then said to us that he encourages this kind of ordinance, that he's had some of the best legal minds in Wisconsin look at it, and they can find no fault with the general concept, and anyone who tells you differently probably doesn't have a lo, strong legal basis. At that point, I said, "Let's put it back." If the idea is that the extension of the, of the two thousand feet, the circle that you would draw around a school, if that is, is too onerous, or it's too exclusionary, then I think we could trim that back.
And I believe that was the issue, that in the original, with the two thousand, one thousand, there was a very small area within one neighborhood that would be possible. And I think at that point, we were, it was suggested to us that that version would not pass.
I would also like to make the point, though, that, and, I mean, honestly, the whole idea here in the agenda item was to refer it to the Public Safety Committee. It's been polled.
Right.
I'm not certain we should fully discuss it here tonight, because that wasn't the way we noticed it.
Mm-hmm.
But my feeling is, it's worth further discussion. And I think that the citizens probably support us looking into, is there a way to do it without getting sued?
I have no problem with that. My question was simply, why was it back?
And that's why it's back, because it's recently become an item of interest to the public.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we review it at Public Safety.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for Public Safety to take up this item. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion carries. Next item is number eleven A, communications recommendations from the mayor. I have an update for you in your packet of the second quarter room tax revenues. I'm going to make it my practice to give you these quarterly at the request of Mr. Virchow and others. If you have questions about this, you can ask me, but I'll report that, um, our second quarter revenue was $38,713, as opposed to the budget amount of $37,500. So we exceeded budget on revenue.
Can I ask you a question about that?
Yes.
Because I did circle that. It says second quarter 2007.
Uh, that's a typo.
Okay. I wondered why we were comparing that.
I asked Kathy to create, Kathy from Finance Department, to create this, and I think it's a good way for you to look at where we're at. If you have suggestions on how you'd like me to report this to you, you can give me suggestions, but this is the reporting format for now. I will be having some recommendations to maybe change the process of how we allocate this money at our next meeting. All right. Communications and items for future agendas, any older person?
I have.
Yes.
Couple items. I would like to review or send back to Public Safety that we go through, uh, the nuisance ordinance in regards to regulating chronic nuisance on properties, levying costs associated with it.
And we have that on our next agendas, the nuisance ordinance.
It, it's different, though. This is about the levy limits and, and passing on fees and fines.
Did we just change that, uh, last spring?
There's some-
Well, why don't you discuss that with the chair and, and come up with what you're asking for?
Okay. The second thing is, I'd like to have a, a request, and I don't know where it would go, to, uh, update chambers, council chambers. And I know it's been talked about in the past. I don't know if you want it in public works, is putting a new, uh, table and new updated systems in here. I don't know where you'd want to put that.
Okay.
And then, thirdly, I'd like to congratulate our Public Utilities Department, in particular our Water Department, for receiving an excellent, uh, uh, job from the Department of Natural Resources on the quality of our water.
We have great water in the city of Hudson, and we're proud of it. Any other older person?
Mr. Bowles?
City administrator?
I did have my update, just a couple things. Is, the nursery severance pool is, is it up?
They're coming today, tomorrow, we don't-
That is up, and as I noted, we did receive $38,000 back, so we did get most of the cost of it covered by these insurance. Um, as a follow-up also on my report, we are still looking for qualified election workers, especially for November. If anybody's interested, we really need people that, once they commit to doing this, obviously, they can't do every election, but the issue we're running into is people sign up to do it, and then go through the training, and then they're never available. If anybody's interested at all, have to be a citizen of the city of Hudson, please contact Nancy, and then she will get you the names of the respective party chairs, and then you can contact them and get on the list. We're really, we're going to need a minimum of thirty-nine workers for November, and we're pushing it right now just to get those. So, I just want to put that word out there, so please contact Nancy if they're in interest, you know, at all. And even if you can work half-days, you know, from two or five, from six in the morning to two, or from two to close, that would be helpful as well.
Okay. With that, I think we're ready to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.